All right, we're going to call the March 8 meeting of the Murphysboro City Council into session. We're here at the airport business center. If you will and feel valid with me, I will do our prayer and our pledge.
Father, we come to you today, Lord, just to thank you for the things that you've done for us, for the ability that we get to sit here to make decisions, to do the best for the betterment of Murphysboro. But we're too often, we're asking for things and asking for guidance, and today's just a day to say thank you. Thank you for putting us in these positions that we clearly know you put us here for a reason. We ask you to bless this city, bless the staff, bless our team that works with us every single day. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to do one thing with your agreeance, council. I'm going to move number four. We have our friends from TDOT here, and I'm sure that y'all would love to sit and listen to every item that we have on our agenda, but I think it'd be better to let y'all present, and I'm sure y'all've got some other things you'd like to be working on. So, we have TDOT Interstate 24 Smart Corridor Project update. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council appreciate the opportunity. TDOT's I-24 Smart Corridor Project takes a comprehensive approach to managing the existing infrastructure and improving travel time reliability between Rutherford County, Rutherford and Davidson Counties. This project integrates freeway and arterial roadway elements along with physical, technological, and operational improvements to provide drivers accurate, real-time information and to actively manage traffic. The last TDOT update on the project, council, was provided on August 11 of 2021. Lee Smith, TDOT's Director of Traffic Operations, will provide an update on where we have been and where we are going. So, Lee, I think here. Is it open?
Turn it over to you, buddy.
Hello, everybody. Thanks again for having us. We really appreciate it. Like Jim said, we're going to be just really going through, what am I going to do here? The presentation mode here. Okay, cool. Can advance. Good deal. Okay. Well, thanks again for having us. We appreciate y'all, and everything that Murphysboro is doing is part of the team. We have four agencies that are part of the Smart Corridor Team. Today, we're just going to talk, like Jim mentioned, about where we've been and where we're going, our schedule, where we are. And one of the things we wanted to hit on today that we didn't talk about as much last time is how we're going to measure success. We're at the very end of the Phase Two of the project. We're in the middle of some acceptance and really testing out the system. So, we'll talk a little bit more about what we're going to do with measuring success, and then also I've got Rebecca Hammond from our Public Information Office, our Community Relations Office, to come and talk about our public outreach portion of the project. This project is about safety and reliability. So, when I came here last time, we talked about this, and the goal and the mission of TDOT is to provide a safe and reliable transportation system. This project supports that goal by adding some foundational elements to that, proactive management of the system, operational strategies. So, we have our four goals, and a project of this size, we always, I show this a lot every time I talk about this project, because I want to make sure people remember why we're doing this. It's very important that we have mobility for all modes, our reliability of travel time, the concentration of crashes we're trying to improve, and then develop agency coordination. That's part of why we try to come and talk to all the city councils along the corridor, just to express our thanks and also continue that partnership for all the local agencies that are involved in the project. So, Phase One, we've completed, and it's really a foundational element of the project. We put in some roadside DMS message signs. We've put in communication infrastructure, and that project was completed back in December 2021, so we came and talked to y'all just before that project was complete. Excited about getting that in place because that set the stage for Phase Two, which we're working on now. Phase Two is really the more visible portion of the project. We've got 67 of the lane control gantries that you'll see out there on the interstate between State Road, I'm sorry, between State Roads 102 and 440 out there. We've been able to put in also, in addition to the lane control system, we're also putting in a variable speed limit system out there. So, that will serve to let folks know well in advance when there's a crash out there on the interstate. And then also, we're putting in traffic signal timing and have all the infrastructure in place, all the technology in place in order to manage traffic if there's a crash out there on I-24. That's a really important piece of the project, and that's where the partnership with the local agencies come in. Murphysboro has been great to work with Jim and Rob and his staff. They're a great partner so that whenever there's a crash on I-24, which y'all know happens quite often, we're able to manage that traffic when it diverts over to State Road One, able to push traffic through there, be able to manage that so that the backups on 24 are less, also on Murphysboro Road. In this project, this phase of the project, we're at the very end of the completion date since October 2023. That includes a six-month burn-in period, which we're about to start here in April. Now, we get to Phase Three, that's the kind of a capstone of the project. One of the other big elements of that project is going to be ramp metering, ramp flow meters, which will help to smooth traffic coming onto the interstate and to address some of those famous traffic jams you see out there every day where you're riding along, brake lights in front of you, and you'll never see really why that's happening. Ramp meters will help to alleviate that. And then the other big element of Phase Three is coming in with arterial cameras and arterial dynamic message signs to help you let traffic know where to go when they get off Interstate 24, and also to give that much more information to the traffic engineers to manage the traffic signal system. Just a little picture of our schedule here. As it shows here, we're in the middle of the CSAT, stands for Conditional System Acceptance Test, so we're right there in the middle of that acceptance testing. We plan on going into operations in April or May of this year. So, we're right there at the end of a, you know, of a three-year project, so it's been really exciting to see y'all come together. And then Phase Three, we're getting design going. We should be able to get into the construction of that project coming into next year. I want to talk a little bit about how we measure success. I mentioned travel time reliability. We're going to be looking at causes of congestion, what the economic impacts are for delays, our crash data, our rates of crashes, the frequency of those crashes. We want to, KPIs stands for key performance indicators. So, we want to be able to measure what we're doing out there, how it's improving traffic, how it's improving safety, and for maintenance as well. The system is only going to be successful if the infrastructure we're putting out there is available and up when we need it to be. But these KPIs are really important so that we know that we're making a difference out there for travel time reliability, and that's important, reliability, not just the, you get to your destination with free flow traffic the entire time. It's over time, you can expect how long it's going to take you to get to your destination. Really important piece of that because we want to make sure expectations are reasonable, that the reliability is really what we're trying to accomplish there. And just a few points here about this technology we're putting in with the variable speed limits and lane control system have been proven to work in other areas. In Texas, they saw almost a 50% reduction in crashes with a cue warning system, which this is a really advanced cue warning system we're putting in here. Variable speed limits are able to reduce collisions by almost 50% in Virginia. So, you see here that these other areas that have tried this technology have had success, and we expect to have similar success in Tennessee here. I'll turn it over now to Rebecca Hammond, who's going to talk a little bit about our public outreach portion of the project and what we're doing to let people know how the system works and what to expect coming forward.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you again for having us. So, this has been a long time coming, but we are very excited. I mean, to get to the end, almost to the end of Phase Two is really exciting for us, and what we want to do is make sure to build that excitement throughout the public. So, our motto is that early and exciting awareness is key. We will be communicating frequently and very early in the process. So, you can see here, we have a few things lined up just for the launch of that Phase Two completion. That Go Live event is going to be more of a VIP event. We're going to demo the product for lawmakers and some other VIPs in the area, along with the Commissioner, maybe the Governor. So, as session's in, I'm sure you can understand that it's very important we start talking about this. Part of that component and something I just want to mention, I'm sure you've been seeing the Transportation Modernization Act being talked about. That's an initiative from the Governor and Commissioner Ely. You know, that is talking about the P3 contracts and choice lanes, which of course we're all interested in. But this is a prime example of how we're not just building out roads, we're not just adding more lanes. Projects like this is investment in technology on our roadways. How can we better use what we have to implement technology into our transportation system? Something that's very important to Commissioner and to us, and this is just one of those things. The second there is our 24-day promotional campaign. So, because of that early and often communication, the social media campaign will start almost a month before we go live. What we want to make sure is that the public understands what these gantries even do. Oh, there's X's above the lane? Does that mean I need to stop? Does that mean I need to get over? There's an arrow? I mean, so we are going to be explaining, there's going to be posts all month leading up to that launch. And then, of course, we'll continue to update the usual channels that we've always had. We use our website, our social media, and of course, like the video options that we have, which are posted on both. So, the key here is that, I want to reiterate something Lee talked about. The goals of this project are that we want to improve safety in this trash or roadway, and we want to make sure to increase and promote travel time reliability. So, these gantries aren't necessarily going to make your trip shorter, but what it will do, and what I and our team will be communicating, is that it will make it more reliable. You will be able to count on that half an hour from your work to the daycare, or from the football field to the school, wherever you are going, and that will help, you know, us or in the public understand what the goals behind this project are. So, just an example of what we're looking at, on the left, we have the one-pagers that we've been handing out at events like this to lawmakers and session, different things. We have newsletters that go out, and then our 24-day campaign, just another example. So, it will feature graphics that explain what the gantries do, graphics that talk about our partnering cities' involvement, so cities like you all who have been such great partners in this, explaining the role you all played and what, you know, what you've been doing behind the scenes. Will we talking about the engineering behind this project? Lee does such a great job of explaining that, but it doesn't always mean that the public understands. So, things like Facebook Live from our TMC to show how this can make a huge impact for them. So, a lot of different ways, obviously trying to really communicate the benefits, and also we don't want these gantries to just go live and no one know what they mean. So, making sure to really over-explain, because as I'm sure you all know, you may scroll over it on your feed, but that does not mean that you're actually consuming the information. So, making sure to, you know, get that message out in a repetitive fashion in hopes of letting drivers fully understand.
Any questions y'all want to have?
That wraps us up.
Thanks for your time. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those questions.
Rebecca, I think it may be, Mike Browning is here. Mike handles all of our information that we push out, and then with Larry Flowers. It may be good for the two of y'all to get together, and we can coordinate through your 24 days how we work through pushing that out through the city and City TV3 and all the things.
We plan to share a lot of those, that content and those graphics with the cities in hopes that, you know, they can also help us get that word out, so we'll be sure to include everyone. Yeah, it's great.
Can you give an idea of, I get in my car at 5:45 to escape and get to the airport because I have a window. So, from the time I get in my car to go to the airport, what can one expect? Like, is it just signs upon, you know, the overpasses, or is there stuff being pushed, you know, to me? I mean, usually I just put on Waze and say, okay, it's saying it's clear, go. Just the average person getting in the car and going to Nashville, depending upon the time, what can they expect?
Couple of things there. One is that we do share information with Waze, so any crash ahead, what we're trying to do, one of the big things is that if there's a crash on I-24, you'll know about it well in advance, be able to make a different decision as far as your route. So, we can't guarantee there's not going to be a crash on I-24, obviously, but the two things that will affect the trip, one is that if there is a crash, you'll know about it well in advance between the dynamic message signs and the overhead gantries. And also, if there is a crash, you'll be able to, you'll know to slow down well in advance and what lane to be in to get around that crash, because a lot of times what happens is there'll be a lot of confusion when that happens, and we'll try to alleviate some of that confusion. So, you have better information for decisions, so if you feel like you need to get off onto Murphysboro Road, you could, and also traversing the, an incident will be much more, much easier, and then you'll be able to cut minutes off your trip by, with the technology out there.
Okay.
And you may know or see, but for anyone who doesn't, the gantries themselves have four different screens on top and then a fifth on the right side. Those four, we call them DMS, but those four screens will show red arrows, X's, green arrows, and then a variable speed limit. So, what we will, especially in the communication, be telling people is red X's mean that there is something in the lane ahead that's blocking this lane. Green arrows mean this lane's open, and then this variable speed limit, something that's really important to us, is that speed limit will be accurately reflecting the speed ahead. So, let's say, obviously, as we know, when crashes or incidents happen, it can get down to 30, 20 miles an hour, but a few miles back, you might slow down to 50 and not know why, because you don't know what's up ahead. So, you will be seeing the speed that is accurately reflected up ahead. So, we're not at the TMC just guessing what that speed is. It's not like, oh, there's a jam, let's put it to 30 just so people slow down. No, we have sensors, thank you, sensors on the gantries that are reading actually how fast the traffic is moving because of that backup, and then it's reflected on that gantry. So, it's very important to us that we make sure that people understand this is a realistic speed limit. This is not just what we think you should be going, like, hey, actually cars are going 30 miles ahead, 30 miles an hour up ahead, slow down.
Okay.
All right, I hope that helps.
That helps. That's, that helps, especially the lanes. Like Smyrna, that's usually where I start backing up.
Sure.
Because people are trying to get off of Sam Ridley, and they're flying in there, and it's just, it's really slowing you down, so if you've got a gate that's allowing people to get in there.
And the gantries will only really be lit up when there's some kind of incident or blockage on the road, but so much of what we see, and I'm sure you all have seen it as well, are secondary crashes. You'll have an incident, and then in the backup, you'll get another rear end or, you know, fender bender that happens. And the unfortunate part is that people aren't paying attention, or they're going too fast. There's so many factors, but this really does target that secondary crash. If people have the notice and can see, oh, up ahead, there's actually something blocking this area, up ahead, there's an incident, they can start slowing down at that moment. So, that's what we're really hoping to, you know, at least lessen, is that secondary crash, and often it can be a lot worse. I mean, I know just in my job, and I see it all the time, but if you start to really look, you'll notice a lot of the crashes on the interstate we're seeing now are rear ends where traffic is slowed, someone's just going there average 70 miles an hour and doesn't see there's a slowdown or a jam, and people are being rear-ended, and it's very serious. So, this is what, when we talk about safety, that's what we're talking about here.
Last question, it's more of an editorial comment, but as I travel and I go to Tullahoma or I go to Smithville or I go to other counties, the impression I get is that TDOT is busy, but it seems like they're busy in a very shared and equitable way for each county. In other words, one project at a time in a particular county, and that's great for a small rural county, but in a fast-growing county like us, in a fast-growing city, it just, my impression is it's like we need more help with TDOT and more projects with TDOT because we're just growing so fast versus a project that's great for Smithville that really needs to be taking place here ahead of time because of our growth, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand that for sure. I think it's one of the years that this project is a good, a big investment, and it's going to help with economic vitality, just because we're going to be able to, we'll be alive, alive on there, couple of time, I must work, you know, consistently throughout the drop, so, yeah.
And, I mean, not alone in those, in terms of, those conversations really begin with the MPOs and RPOs and your city officials, even your representatives. So, you know, a lot, yes, it is a lot of fair distribution, but as you can imagine, there are so many voices competing and vying for such small funding, and that's a lot of what this initiative in session is about, but yes, a lot of that conversation of what gets chosen is going to start with those MPOs and RPOs.
Folks, thanks for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming down. Thank you so much.
Thanks, y'all. Have a great day.
All right, thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
All right, we'll move to Resolution 23R05 MED Pension Plan.
The, you'll recall with the sale of the electric department to Middle Tennessee, that the city retained the MED pension plan because it was not a Euris plan, it couldn't be transferred to MPE. The intention was to transfer the plan's obligations to a financial institution, very common for pensioning. That's my background music.
Is that your walkout music?
It's your exit music.
Walkout music, yeah. Now you got walkout music.
Excellent. I won't sing now. The plan all along was to transfer, like I said, and a lot, a lot of pension plans, most pension plans, actually, if you have any relatives that are retired, usually their pension plan is being paid from a financial institution who's, who accepted the transfer of that plan. And so, that's, that's the process we're going through right now. We retained consultants, BCG and Coudon to assist with that, thank you. And BCG has expertise in this type of transaction. That's all they do. They went to market and actually approached 20 financial institutions, some of which don't participate in with plans our size, they only do larger plans, so some of those were excluded for that. They got six plans that were interested in submitting final bids, and that surprised them because two or three was what they had expected, what they'd seen, so we have a lot of activity, which is good for us in the plan, in the transaction. With those six, they did an extensive review. I sent it to you a little bit earlier, printed out here. It's about 250 pages, going through all kinds of analysis that they have on these six companies. They found them all to be very highly rated, highly respected. They looked at not just their financial aspects, but the customer service standards and how they had the experience that they've had in assisting retirees with their retirement plans, and they all came out very, very strong. So, the pension committee met Monday, and actually took quite a bit of time for BCG to present the pension plan, pass the resolution recommending that all six be considered as part of what will be a bid process that'll occur next Tuesday. They passed, the committee passed a resolution to council, making that recommendation, and you have before you a resolution to, for the city to accept the best price to authorize me, as we do when we sell bonds, because it's a, it's an auction, and you have to have a response almost immediately to authorize me to accept the best, best bid that's placed by these six companies and to work towards finalization of the transfer, which will occur late April, early May timeframe, is what it's set for right now. We'll continue, we've been communicating with the plan participants, quite a few of the deferred vested, so those who have vested in the plan and are not drawing benefits, 82, over 80% of those took the buyout, so they're, they'll be paid out completely and be able to transfer those funds to other retirement accounts. And so, we're dealing with a small percentage of deferred vested, and those actually active participants in the plan that'll be transferred to one of the companies. So, happy to answer any questions. Again, you have a resolution in front of you, so we'd ask that you pass that resolution.
This resolution authorizes the city manager to accept the best price next Tuesday, similar to how we do the bond resolutions, where he's authorized to accept that best bond price.
Deadline's next Wednesday for the submission of the bids.
Tuesday. Next Tuesday, the bids will come in. Tuesday morning, the bids will come in, and we have to, like we do with the bonds auction, we have to respond within an hour or two.
Nobody's submitted one yet, or they'll just all come in Tuesday?
They come in on Tuesday.
They did a preliminary round, which is the way that it's conducted, so do a preliminary estimate, just I assume to make sure that nobody's just completely far off and not doing the analysis. They all came in at a tight, tight range, but it was pretty positive from a standpoint. Economic conditions actually work in our favor in this case. So, the preliminary bids, which will vary, although 3% to 5% is kind of the normal variance, so not a huge amount when they actually go to final bids on Tuesday.
And you'll note in the resolution that there's a, there's a ceiling price on the city manager's authority, and that reflects what was the highest preliminary bid that was submitted, and the consultant's expectations based on experience is that final bids come in lower than the preliminary bids. So, that's why it's, you know, that's why it's capped at, city manager's authority is capped at that amount.
And the way this works, it's like a golf, the lowest bid wins.
Wins.
So, you want to, you want the bids to be lower because we're actually paying a price, so the lower the bid, the better off.
Half of the cost of that transfer is borne.
Right. Half the cost of the transfer, Middle Tennessee has paid up to 3.5 million. The bids, preliminary bids that came in show that we'll be, we'll be fine from that standpoint. So, Middle Tennessee will pay half the cost.
So, essentially, like, they all can do the job, it's a matter of who has the lowest bid.
Who has the lowest bid, and there's a lot of financial factors that vary by the company that goes into their bid process, so, you know, some, some will have a portfolio and they feel like they could bid an amount that's different than somebody else. So, they're competing based on really what they can do to take in this into their portfolio, this pension plan into their portfolio. It's not like an auction or an art auction where you're just bidding against someone. You know, they're going to submit their best bid for their portfolio.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Let me just ask one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That transfer cost, that's seven million, and the reason why we are going to be responsible for the 3.5 is because we split it with MED, right?
And that would be the maximum, yeah, right. Yep.
I'll second.
Have a motion?
Yep, in a second.
In a second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, move to fiscal year 23 budget amendment, administer emergency ordinance 2301.
We have a budget amendment to increase the state street aid expenses. This will be covered by the state street aid restricted fund balance, and Jim and Chris are here if there are any questions about the specific expenses.
Aye.
Ms. Gills-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Item 3, retail package liquor store certification compliance for Bubba's Wine and Liquor.
We have a certificate of compliance for change in ownership for Bubba's Wine and Liquor located at 2510 South Church Street. State law requires retail liquor stores to have a liquor certificate of compliance. The applicants met all requirements. And Austin, to answer a previous question, you have to be 21.
Okay, thank you. No questions, motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, then we'll go into CIP allocation review.
So, for our CIP, on our bonds, we have borrowed at historically low rates, and now on the investments that we've put into, we're experiencing higher interest rates, which puts us at risk of having arbitrage compliance and having to pay arbitrage. With that, I wanted to come back to council because what we're also experiencing is delays in projects due to numerous reasons, our developments and the capital projects that it's going into. What I put before council, you all have a sheet that has funds available before reallocations, I gave just a high-level example of Town Creek reallocation, what it would look like if we were to reallocate Town Creek from the general fund, and to move two of our CIP projects into general fund, to put it into like a placeholder on our assigned fund balance, to go ahead and spend our CIP money now, so that we can spend those bond monies down and most prudently spend our money and use the money on the projects that are moving and put reserves on the money that's not moving, on the projects that aren't moving, so that we don't have to pay those arbitrage compliance. With that being said, I won't be creating projects, at no point will I create projects, and I will be bringing back to council when I do this, a sheet that's similar to this or something else similar that will show the reallocations that are done, so that council will see how we've moved projects, so you can see the change from general fund to bond or the reallocations that have been done. But what, what we're coming to council with is saying, hey, we don't want to pay arbitrage penalties because we have projects that have stalled out. We want to have the ability, in my role as treasurer, to come in and most prudently spend our money, so that we can move along with projects that are moving, and come back to council and say, this is what we've reallocated.
What would the penalty be, like this ballpark?
I think they sweep the arbitrage earnings, don't they?
It would be on the earnings, yeah, and it would go back to the beginning of
The bond issuance.
The bond issuance, so it would vary, and it would depend on which bond it's on, because arbitrage looks at the bond and it goes back to the very beginning of the bond.
So there's a couple of things going on. As Jennifer said, it was historic low rates of borrowing, so it made all the sense in the world to go out and borrow on an entire project. And then we hit 2020, 2021, and things really slowed down, and then we went into a period of supply chain issues, of just getting materials and things to be able to find, or to advance projects forward. And now we're in a period where we have some projects, because of the banking situation and interest rates and the, and the reserve requirements going up, the banks not having funds available to loan that are, kind of need to be extended out. So, some of the funds that we have in, there's two things going on, you have a period of time to spend out that money, or you put your tax exempt status at risk for the bonds. And we don't want to do that, obviously, that would be a very big issue. So we need to shift those funds within the resolutions and the bond documents that allot to other projects. And we have a broad category of things, we can shift them to other CIP projects that are now advancing or can advance, which we'll bring to council for approval, and spend out those funds, and later refund, well, the projects that, you know, are on hold. And the other thing, as we mentioned on the arbitrage, because we borrowed at really low rates, rates shot up very, very quickly. The funds that you don't spend out, you can't earn more than what you're paying on them, that's arbitrage, and the feds don't want municipalities going into the business of borrowing money and then making money on it, that's not the business. So basically, they come in, they, on a complex calculation, but in essence, they sweep the arbitrage and you got to pay it to the feds. We'd rather not do that. We'd rather have the funds go into our projects in our city because it's our taxpayers' money, essentially. So, so that's, so we're, we're right now reallocating CIP, coming up the list, reallocate CIP funds, Jennifer and Aaron are working on that, and as we do that, we'll bring back to council what we're, we're doing. But the whole goal here in shifting these around is not because we don't want to do certain projects or we would rather do other projects, it's really to get those funds out before we hit some issues. And it all has to do with circumstances that are out of our control, we just have hit this point.
Ask is not specific right now, it's just a general idea that this is an appropriate way of handling the resources, so there's not a specific figure that you have, and that'll have to come back to us.
That'll come back, we wanted to let council know what is going, for the last few weeks, Jennifer and Aaron worked pretty hard on this, and we wanted to update council on what, what we're doing. So when you do see these projects coming back, you're going to have some background understanding on why this is being done.
Do you need any action from council, or is it just for your information?
Not, not right now, no, we'll bring back, we'll bring back projects as we go.
And what you have isn't necessarily what we would be moving, it's an example of Right. what it would look like.
Yeah.
It still all has to balance out.
Yeah. It all has to balance out, and even, so if this is what we would be moving, like you can see, we've got Cherry Lane moving to general fund out of the 2021 bond, we've got Town Creek moving from general fund into the 21 bond, that same amount is still there, it's just that Cherry Lane is now sitting in general fund, waiting to be spent out of general fund.
Does each project have that arbitrage, I mean, do you deal with it?
Every bond has the arbitrage, so the arbitrage, what it has in it, and I have, it's in our federal tax certificate that's signed as part of the closing documents on our bonds, and I have a couple copies of it, if council wants a copy, so email it out to council.
Yeah.
On the 22 bond that we closed on. But the arbitrage is, and there's varying levels, varying numbers of months on it, the max is a three-year, and then after three years, it looks at any time from the beginning of the bond.
It's tied to the initial allocation of the bonds. Okay, that makes sense.
Initial issuance, so, they don't, the IRS doesn't care how you spend the money, the bondholders do, because, you know, they have specific parameters in the issuance. They just, they're saying, you can't hold this money and make money on it, you know, you need to spend it out on projects, which is why you go about the issuance. So, it really is on an issuance basis, not a project. That's why we can switch projects in and out, as long as it's within the fairly broad parameters of the bond issuance, the bond documents.
And we fortunately have written our resolutions so broadly that our bonds have a broad range of what we can spend our bond on.
Yeah, most public purposes. So, one of the things that you might see now with more of, and we haven't done in quite some time, you've seen it in the past in some council people that have been on council for a while, is refunding resolutions. You know, if the market is, if we have money in the bank that we need to spend and the market rates don't indicate that it's great to go out, it's better to spend the money, we may spend the money out of general fund with a resolution to refund that in the future with a bond issuance. And so, you may see some more refunding resolutions come than you have in the past over the next few months, or months, we don't do, we don't do monthly finance, next year or two.
I mean, the refunding resolutions, that's one of the reasons that with the, I don't want to say excessive, I always look at Aaron when I say this, the amount of money that went into the fund balance this year, where y'all saved a lot and we collected more, I mean, one of the reasons to be able to have that money in there is that when interest rates are the way they are right now, and the Fed chairman testified to Congress yesterday saying that they felt like they were going to go up again, that we can use that money as opposed to paying, you know, 5% or 4.5% right now.
What we used to do, you'll recall that, mayor, I'm sure, we used to do reimbursement resolutions for a while and build up a stock before we would go issue debt, so we may look at that avenue too, just depending on how rates are going.
What Jennifer's talking about, I see it in just a broader function, if we've got money sitting that we can't spend because a project has been delayed, specifically road projects, it makes no sense for that money just to sit there and pay interest on it and then not be able to use it. So, if a project comes that we can move forward quicker, it'd be a different, it would be different if we didn't have money sitting aside that we could do those refunding resolutions, then it, it would be a different situation, but it makes a lot of sense to be able to put the money to work. Any questions for Jennifer? All right, any questions on the January 2023 dashboard? All right, you've got board and commission appointments? I don't think we have any, do we?
Remember seeing you, you know.
You have one beer permit?
We have a regular permit for a new location for a grocery market at 1604 Memorial Boulevard. The applicant's met all requirements for a permit and is recommended for approval and has passed building and codes inspections. Second.
Second.
Ms. Everwater? Aye.
Ms. Gills-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shaclitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, any statements to be paid?
Yes, sir.
Any other business for staff?
Solid waste, if we could, for a second. This year legislative session, we proposed an amendment to the statute that exists to allow county solid waste authorities. And the amendment would allow municipalities to collect residential waste, so that they have a large enough operation than, you know, just a solid waste department, but they invest a lot in solid waste management, to also create an authority. And the idea was, if you have a county that has, like Rutherford County, some disparate interests in how solid waste is handled, we're the only jurisdiction here that actually collects residential garbage in Rutherford County, that those interests can be handled separately. And so that the municipality could create an authority, and that authority could do financing, if it chooses to do that. And essentially creating an enterprise fund or a, a separate entity that, that can be self-supporting either through fees or do financing for other projects if, if need be. Darren and I testified yesterday in the legislature in support of, of that, we had some questions. I think, you know, it went fairly well, I think we answered a lot of their questions. One of the questions that came up though, and they are looking at, the legislatures are, recognize that there needs to be a statewide solution for solid waste, and that there's a lot of issues out there on solid waste. And so they recognize that, they want to do that, they want to do it next year. That timing is not good on the project that we're discussing now on Waste Away as far as getting federal funding for that, so we didn't want to wait the entire year. So, one of the things they've done on the bill is to do a population-based application, meaning, and you see this in statutes all the time, is that it applies only to, it applies statewide, but is only applicable to certain population bases, which really limits us to Murfreesboro. But there's some concern about that, so they asked about potentially just having a private act that allows us, if we chose to do it, it's an optional thing, we don't have to, but allows us to create a solid waste authority just on a private act as part of our charter, as opposed to having a statutory amendment. And so, we said we'd explore that option, bring it to you, we haven't drafted a private act of what it would look like, it'd probably just mirror the existing statute to the extent that it makes sense to do that. And, so we're going to, probably, we'll explore that option, bring it back to council and see if council has interest in having the legislature pursue a private act. Procedurally in the legislature, we'd have to do it pretty quickly, just because of the way things are falling out, but it's still possible, they tell us. Dr. Terry and Senator Reeves, Representative Terry and Senator Reeves are carrying the bills, and they both were there, we met with them yesterday, they understand, and I think they'd be supportive of having this flip into a private act, taking it out of all the committees and going to another committee, which it, it flows quite quickly, but it would give us an option. Whether we exercise it or not is completely up to council at a later date, but it would give us an option to do something like that. So, if there's no opposition to that, we can draft up and see what it looks like and, and start the process. It has to go to council first.
Yep.
And then they make the request to the general assembly, and then, and then they can run it through their process, and then it comes back to council to be adopted as a, as a private act. So there's a few steps involved, we'd have to move pretty quickly if we want to go that route. But that's what we're looking at, unless anybody opposes doing that. And the authority would be good, I, to be honest with you, we, we looked at the statute to amend it, it's, it's a, it's really a financial vehicle for solid waste enterprise operations, whatever project you want to do with it in the future, you know, it doesn't hurt to have that authority, it would operate, much like the electric department used to operate, water resources operates now, it would have its own board and, you know, work like a utility.
Options are good.
Okay, we'll go, we'll draft up something pretty quick here.
Options are not good.
Let's see how it looks.
The next council meeting's agenda, all likelihood?
Well, I would say yes, and then something keeps that from happening, but as quickly as we possibly can. Yeah, we have a really short fuse on that, so I would anticipate, we're definitely going to try and get it on the next agenda.
The private act wouldn't preclude some kind of, if in the future, a collaborative effort between the city and the county
No.
appropriate, it wouldn't preclude that happening?
It, it wouldn't preclude that, it would, might even facilitate that, make it a little bit easier. The amendment to the statute wouldn't have precluded that either, so, you know, that was kind of one of the concerns, but if you, if you read through carefully enough, which, you know, they have so much in front of them, I don't fault them, but legislators generally don't, they lie on staff and lobbyists and people who are sponsoring the bill to explain it to them. So, but we kind of made it very clear as best we could that it doesn't affect a county, a regional a regional, county or regional authority coming together, that they can just join that or dissolve and the city join it, however. All those options are still on.
Farther down the road than some of those.
Further down the road and, you know, people making sure the interests all line up. And right now, that's the biggest thing in Rutherford County, is the interests really don't align.
Yeah. Any questions for Craig? Any other business from staff? Any other business from the council? I have two things that, I apologize, it may take us a minute to discuss, but the timing, I got an email this morning from a school board member with the county and to give you an update.
It wasn't my wife, was it?
No, but I did talk to her a couple of weeks ago, it was a good conversation. The county school board is going through the process of purchasing the Beatty property that's out on Blackman Road. That's, I guess it'd be west of Shelton Square, does that sound right, Darren?
Yes.
Yeah. A couple of months ago, Valerie Smith got a letter from the county requesting sewer to that school site. Sam, Craig, Darren, Greg all got together and had, you know, some significant concerns from a standpoint of, you know, we passed an ordinance four or five years ago that we don't allow outside city sewer without annexation. And then also the road network around that area, because Blackman Road, that network is pretty tough, Burt Knob is tough, One Mile Lane is tough, and then the property is actually in Smyrna's urban growth boundary. And so, you know, that's one of the main, the main areas that people travel to get from Alma Ville Road to Murfreesboro without getting on the interstate. So Greg sent that letter to the school board and also, you know, basically saying, like we typically do with other outside city sewer customers, if you get sewer, you have to develop to city standards and you have to go through the city process. Naturally, the school, the county didn't like that and, you know, I don't blame them. But the school board then researched about purchasing, I think it's another 16 or 18 acres, I think's what the total is, 16 acres, so at $80,000 an acre, it's about spending an additional 1.2 million not to be annexed and not to, not to get city sewer. I met with Dr. Sullivan and Chairman Sharp and then talked to a couple of the school board members. And I will tell you that the meeting with Dr. Sullivan, I don't think could have gone any better. For those of y'all who haven't met him, I think he, if I had to equate him to someone's personality, he's very similar to Trey Duke and they've worked together. And I mean, you know, Trey Duke, I think we know how he does as a city. And they brought, you know, and couple this with the Rockville annexation that was going through. And, you know, I was explaining, I understand why the county would not want to come into the city. You know, there are some more cumbersome restrictions that we have, although I still say that if you're going to build, like for example, last night, the Murfreesboro Police Department, they were out at Segal. There's three Mustangs that, students at Segal High School that have been doing donuts in Segal Road and law people have been walking. And so there's traffic that comes with high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, all those things that are inside the city. But our landscaping regulations, all those things are greater than what the county is. So fast forward off through that, we had a really good conversation on maybe what the benefit is to the county for being part of the city. You know, one of the things is the county's paying 50% more for sewer service because they are an outside city sewer customer. In Rockville, that equates over the last 10 years to almost $400,000 that the county taxpayers paid just because they don't want to be part of the city. But their argument was, it takes us, this is nothing against y'all, Greg, they were like, look, it takes us longer to go through your process as opposed to not having to go through any planning process, which I think, just my opinion, the government allowing themselves, themselves to not have to go through the governmental processes that we all approve makes absolutely no sense, but that's another discussion. Long story short, the two things that we talked about, and I'll just give you my opinion and want to get y'all's, I don't think it's right for the city to hold sewer as a hostage for county schools. You know, those schools are going to benefit city residents and we all agree that networks need to be improved, but holding sewer out and making the taxpayer spend 1.2 million dollars in additional funds sure as heck is not going to help us be able to get more roads improved in the area. But then the other thing, so we need to talk about how we feel on providing sewer to governmental buildings without going through the annexation process. The second thing is, and we've had this discussion for years, rebating fees back on governmental buildings when someone pulls a permit. And right now, any building that the city of Murfreesboro builds, or the county builds inside our jurisdiction, they pay planning fees and building and codes fees, correct? So we're, in essence, we're charging ourselves for fees. And the reason we've talked about this for years is typically that's borrowed money. So we're taking money out of our right pocket that we're borrowing and then we're paying it back to ourselves and paying interest on the money that we charge ourselves for those fees. So the question is whether we wanted to rebate those fees on governmental projects as long as they're, they're going through the appropriate process that everybody else goes through. So those are the two things. And I wouldn't have brought this up until I got the email today that said, basically, the county school board has to make a decision in eight days whether to recommend to the county commission to buy additional land or for a step system for a school or to see if the city would give a will serve letter for, for sewer.
Makes all the sense in the world to me, the city residents or county residents having a, every project might have to be dealt with because, I mean, if it's right on our border, then it may be different than if it was eligible or something like that. So I have a problem with providing sewer to schools. I think that's a very appropriate decision.
I agree.
An annexation bill or without?
I'm sorry?
Are you saying with, if we annex it or if we don't annex it and just provide outside of the city sewer?
I think it, that would be, I mean, if they don't see, I mean, what was their reaction? If we invite sewer, would they?
The county's not, they're not going to ask to be annexed. I mean, maybe in the future, if we can prove, I agree that there's value with them being inside the city. Right now, they don't see what the value is. I think that could be a future discussion, that we talk about what that value is.
It's $400,000, you said, of value that's there. I mean, you can make that case over a period of time and maybe that's the way to do it, but I don't think, see, holding up the development of that school because we're.
Mr. Cole, what do you think?
Well, we can talk a little legally, we can make an exception. So to grant outside city sewer service has always been planning, commissioning, council's decision. The way that we've gone through that, the process has been that they come through and ask for annexation, they get denied, then they get approved as an outside city sewer customer. I think in this case, the county, we know that the county has maybe oversight over the property over the school or will not ask for that annexation. They still desire to be to request outside city sewer. So I think what we're trying to do is just create a caveat in the city code that allows county schools, if we want to just limit it to county schools, that they would have the option to ask for outside city sewer without asking for annexation. But the decision would still be the council's prerogative as to whether to grant that outside city sewer service. So I think talking with Adam, who already talked about this, that all we would do is we would have to do a city, city code or a city ordinance qualification that would say that county schools have the opportunity to request outside city sewers without asking for, for annexation at the same time, or just bypass that request altogether. I don't have a problem with providing outside city sewer to other folks. We always said in our design guidelines that if providing outside city sewer provides a greater benefit, then annexation affords the city. And in this case, we've named schools or maybe parks or other public purpose activities that we're saying it's not important for us to get annexation into the city as it is to serve this public purpose with sewer. And schools is specifically named as one of those purposes. So it's your decision, we have the sewer available. I would say that for them to get a will serve letter to them in eight days, we can give them a will serve letter, but it will have to be, I think, conditional upon passage and approval of the city ordinance. And then if everyone is not have issue with that, I'm sure there's some verbal exchange or some communication can occur that the council doesn't see that as a problem. But I don't, I don't think I can give them a true will serve letter until we get that ordinance changed.
Yeah, it had to be that contingent upon the governing body passing, passing that.
Correct.
Darren, you said that schools were included if we could make the case that it wouldn't really benefit the city to bring in the school, have it annexed. So my question is, what would the city's benefit be if we did annex, if they did ask for annexation and we did annex it?
This property is in Smyrna's urban growth boundary. I don't think we could even annex it if we, it would have to agree for us to annex it, correct?
It gets complicated.
It depends.
My thought is that this property is a quarter of a mile, half a mile from the city limits. And I have, I mean, I'll publicly say I think I've made my mistakes of not cooperating and playing well. I don't, and this may be another one of those that we say that we're going to provide sewer and nothing happens. But I'm not sure that in the state where we are right now, not providing sewer is going to help those roads get improved out there if we don't do that. That's, I think this may be sort of an olive branch to say, okay, let's try to figure out how we work through these issues. And I may be wrong.
I'm not going to say anything until everybody else speaks because I have an opinion.
Well, the last thing too is, the schools, and what we talked about, schools have a higher transportation count and community impact than any business that you can put in an area. And I made this example the other day, I, you know, I walk through, run through Segal High School a lot. And the amount of trash that is around that campus that goes into the neighborhood is astounding how many, how much is there. And so to argue that you don't want landscaping and those things around communities, see, I don't think that's right. I think you should have to put landscaping and those things in when you're, when you have that much of a community, community impact. But I do agree that we have sewer and requiring another governmental entity to spend millions more than what they would have to just because we can, I'm not sure.
Are we requiring them to or?
Well, I mean, to build this, here's, here's the thing that they said that made a lot of sense. And we've seen this with park property on the west side of town. If you could find large acreage tracts that have infrastructure, they would either be developed in a subdivision already or a commercial business would already have them. So the property that they're trying to find right now, that are large 60 to 100 acre sites, all has infrastructure improvements that have to be made. So the land's just not there to do anything. So I'm not sure it's going to get any better moving forward.
Point for Plainview, when they purchased that, great deal on the land, but we had to run sewer. And then the roads, they had to put a significant amount into the roads just to make it accessible for buses. It's hard to find these large tracts of land.
We're not voting on anything today, Greg?
No, but I mean, I think the council is going to have to either have some kind of affirmation that, yeah, it's something we would consider, or no, it's that we won't consider. You know, they've got to make a recommendation of the county commission.
I'll give my opinion then. So I agree with Bill. At the end of the day, these students, you know, their parents are county taxpayers, city taxpayers. I'm of the opinion, I guess, is what is fair to us is fair to them. So if we want to keep, as you say, Shane, putting, taking money out of our right pocket and putting it into our left in terms of fees, if we want to keep that and we do it, then we keep it and they should fall in that same. If we want to suspend that for us, you know, or we pay a fee, then we suspend it for them. I'm like you, I agree in terms of not holding them hostage, you know, for sewer, because we're talking about schools and the need for it and to go and purchase 16 additional acres because they don't have sewer, it's kind of ridiculous, in my opinion. So I would say, you know, I would extend it to them, but I'm assuming they would pay the cost of running that to them, which I think is fair. And for the life of me, what you just said there, I can't understand why they wouldn't want to be annexed, because if they're, if I'm a, I'm a county taxpayer and you're a county taxpayer and you're a county taxpayer, that means out in Rockville, they've paid an extra, we've all paid a little bit towards that $400,000 over the last so many years. So it doesn't make sense why they wouldn't want to be annexed, but if that's their decision, that's their decision. But I would say we should run it to them and we should be a good partner, because ultimately it's the kids and it's the future. But on the fees, I would say if we have fees for ourselves, then they have those same fees. If we decide to waive those fees, then we waive those fees for us as well, I guess is what I'm saying. For the eight days, what would that date be, Shane?
I don't know. I mean, I think if we just let them know that we had, we're having this discussion and that, you know, I think Darren would need to talk with Jeffrey, their county attorney or their school, the school board attorney to talk about, hey, this is what we can and can't do, but I feel comfortable that the council feels like that they would lean in that direction, then that's, that's where we would, we would be.
Is the entire property in the urban growth boundary or a portion of it?
I think it's all in Smyrna's urban growth boundary, all of it is.
It's all, it's the whole Beatty property.
But I want to be clear, I think this is not a great, great location for a school based on the infrastructure. So, I mean, but the roads, this is where we need to be very upfront that, you know, Commissioner Reed and I have, I think, in a better spot, but like, we can't have the commissioner on that side of town come up to us in two years talking about the traffic issue at the school, like they, like out at Highway 99 and coming, you know, to the council talking about development around the school when we didn't make the decision to put that school there. And so I think that's where, what I was explaining to them, that, look, if the city's going to provide sewer to a school site and it's, it's anticipated that around a school site, development's going to occur because people want to build subdivisions around schools, well, then don't come to us complaining about the infrastructure in the area when, I mean, like Highway 99, it was almost like you wanted to say, look, we told you so. We told you that 20 years ago whenever you decided to put three, three schools on a two-lane highway, two-lane stout, state route. And now we've got residents coming to us telling us that you let this traffic situation occur out there. So I think it's got to go both ways and I hope that.
Hey Shane?
Yes?
Not to interrupt, but a thought just occurred, and I'll go back to Plainview. And Greg Brooks, who was the. And Greg Brooks, who was the hero of the day, when he found all these, you know, he found money in his budget to improve those roads, they hadn't accounted for that. So if we did annex it, are we on the hook for the roads in and around there?
I think there would be an argument that we would be. So I mean, in this case, I'm not sure that annexation makes sense at all to, well, plus we can't annex it, because it's, it's outside of our urban growth boundary, although this is really an interesting spot, because even though it is in Smyrna's urban growth boundary, way closer to where Murfreesboro has grown into than it is to Smyrna. So I mean, this is just a, it's, it's a very interesting site.
To me, before Craig, yeah, sorry Craig.
No, no, go ahead, you're finishing.
To me, it makes sense to say, we will serve, we will give you the sewer, we'll work with you, but you're on the hook for the roads at the end of the day. That's kind of the way I'm, I'm leaning on this. And, and you know, Bill, I may be sleeping on your couch tonight before it's over.
Along those lines, we, we met with Dr. Sullivan too, and we had a very, a very good meeting. And initially, when we talked about the roadways, his comments is, why are the schools responsible for roads? And I said, well, my comment back then was, they're not, but they are responsible for making sure that people get safely to their school, safely and efficiently to their schools. And so your obligation is to coordinate with whatever jurisdiction and take, take away the annexation. If it's a county, then it's a county. Coordinate with the county and make sure that they can update these roads to handle what you're putting there. You can't do that in a vacuum. And I think they have in the past done that. Plainview is a perfect example. I think they, well, Brooks saved the day, I don't think he was happy about it. It's a zero-sum game. He took away from other projects to put those roads out there. So they can't just slap a school and then hope that everybody does rules, whether it's in the city or not. From an annexation standpoint, I mean, we probably, Darren's probably right, if we went through the annexation process, we probably would say, either we can't, it's outside, or we wouldn't annex them for lots of different reasons. What they don't want to do, though, going through the annexation process, because it's part of our process, is to do the road studies. They don't want to do that, because that's what we refer to them. So they don't want to request annexation, because it would force them to do the road things, even to get disapproved, which they should be doing anyway. And as far, and one more thing, as far as the fees are concerned, the, I think, and I'm reading into it, it's my impression, that the schools felt like we were just imposing fees to impose fees. Fees are imposed to recover a portion, not all, but a portion of the costs that the city encourages. The city's taxpayers encourage to review their plans. So while it's certainly legitimate to say, okay, for the benefit of another organization to waive those fees, we have to understand that when we do waive those fees outside the county, that, for the benefit of county taxpayers, of which the city are, all those fees then, that we waive, are borne just by the city residents, even though the city's schools are outside, which may be legitimate, because it'll be city students going to that school as well. So it's fine, but when we talk about fees, we should always keep in mind is that it is a cost. So we're just recovering a portion of it. And our taxpayers bear that, so we just throw that in there so it's not lost in the discussion.
Yeah, I guess what I was saying was, if we were to waive fees for the city doing a government building for us, then we should do the same. If we keep it for us, then we keep it for them.
Yeah. If we waive it for us, we're just shitting, we're just shifting funds when we waive it for us.
I understand exactly what you're saying, and I agree, because I do think that there is a cost to staff members and the time that they put on these projects. I would probably argue that out of anything that we build, schools would be one, that that's our responsibility that we want to help with. But the other part too, that I just can't, for the life of me, understand is why that I would, and when I say I, why I would charge myself fees, but I'm borrowing the money that I'm charging myself fees on.
I completely agree. I never under...
Yeah, so that's all I'm saying, is that, you know, making our...
That's like, we never did that either. I mean, we wouldn't pay our fees, it didn't make any sense.
Yeah, so like, you know, the, I don't know how much we paid on the police building. My guess is it was hundreds of thousands of dollars that we would have paid on permit fees, and so then we talk about how over budget the police headquarters was, you know, was, that I still argue with. But we're still paying interest on the fees that we paid ourself. So if you amortize that out over a 20-year period, we're going to be paying more in interest than what we recuperated in fees, which makes no sense.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting one way or the other. I just want people to keep in mind that it is a cost that we're offsetting. And with the schools and other governmental organization, that makes sense, because we're serving. But if we have a subdivision or something, where we, at that point in time, we probably want to really be careful on out of, out of city sewers, waiving fees for anything like that, because now we aren't serving a governmental function.
Since Darren and I will probably be the ones drafting an ordinance for you to review, I want to make sure that if, if we go down this route, I want to make sure I, we have clear direction. And the way I see this is that there are, there are three component parts of this, and it's the middle one, the second one is the one where I think there's going to be, that we need to have the most conversation about. The first is, can we provide sewer service with, without the school board requesting annexation? That's a, that's a pretty easy fix, or easy change. The third one is the waiving of fees or rebating of the fees, and one of the conversations that I've had with Darren and with Jeffrey, the attorney for the Ruffigan School Board, and with the mayor, is that, you know, maybe, because there's some concern about if we, if you completely waive fees, that that may, like, the windfall may come to the contractor, not to the government.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it was a rebate, and it has to be paid, and then it's rebated back to the county.
Rebated back to the county or the government entity. The second one, and this is, this is, I think, where the rub may be between the city and the county, and it gets to issues about roads and things like that, is that under the existing city code for condition, the conditions for water and sewer service to property outside the limits, city limits, it says, I'm going to quote here, "If buildings are to be constructed on the subject property, the construction must be in compliance with the standard building codes, international plumbing code, regulations of the water resources department, national electric code, international property maintenance code, subdivision regulations, streets and sidewalk regulations, comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of Murfreesboro, utilizing the zoning classification deemed appropriate by the planning commission approved by the city council, and assigned ordinance of the city." So that's what, if, if someone requests for annexation now, or they're seeking sewer service outside the city limits, they apply for annexation, they agree that they'll abide by these requirements, and then the planning commission and city council can make a decision about whether to annex the property or not. But they have, they have in that agreement, agreed that we will develop this property in exchange for sewer service to meet these standards and go through this process. So basically, you're saying, instead of by ordinance, they are agreeing by contract to comply with these development standards and follow this development process. The question is, is that what you, if we were to, say, the county schools are not required to request annexation, does that provision then say, we'll extend sewer service if the county schools agrees to these same provisions? Or is it just for, or is it some subset of those provisions?
If that's what the ordinance says, it's, the plain language is pretty clear. This is an outside the sewer, if we're not annexing it, if they're not applying for annexation, they're applying as outside the, outside the city wanting sewer, then they have to comply with all the standards listed in that ordinance.
And, and what this would, what this would, if, if that's what council wants, is that they want those, those standards to still apply, then basically all that's changing is, you don't have to request annexation, you don't have to go through that annexation process, you don't have to go through the plan of services process, but you do have to, by agreement, when you request sewer, that you'll agree to this process.
What do we do for Plainview?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
And when, when was the ordinance, when was this ordinance passed?
We ran them, sure.
Was it after?
The last amendment to this was...
I just wonder if it existed.
August 2018, but I think, I think I went back and looked at this. I think this ordinance has been on the books since the 1980s.
Oh, well.
Okay, what chapter are you in?
It is section 33-2.1.1.
Well, what if we did the, what if we had Adam and Darren look at it? Some of that they'll need to comply with. They'll need to comply with the regulations. If we're going to give them sewer, they need to comply in solid ways. If, if, if compliance includes fees, we can look at exercising that.
We have capacity.
And, and maybe propose something back to council, instead of trying to draft an ordinance right now.
Yeah, I don't think we...
No, no.
Bring something back to council, I think that encapsulates what you've talked about, which really is accepting them from the fees and probably some zoning.
I don't even think the fees is a main discussion right now. I think it's just if we are going to provide sewer to a school that's not in an area that we are going to annex. Plainview, I think, is a little different, just because those have been forced means where...
This is what you're saying?
Yeah.
This will have to be a dedicated project, a dedicated course.
I don't want to say too much, but...
So what would they pay in fees, hypothetically?
I, I don't think we have required, whatever that ordinance says, I don't think that on some of the schools, like out at Epps Mill, out, uh, Plainview, that we have required them to develop the city standards.
That, that may be the case, and it may be, and I don't know whether they requested annexation or not, or how that process was handled. This is, this is, this is, this is my first time looking at this issue.
I agree. I think Rockville, we didn't, they didn't request the annexation, but I don't think they did it at Plainview. I think we approved it as an outside city sewer customer, but did not go through, I don't think we followed the letter of instructions.
And that's been my whole discussion, that as we go through this, that it's hard to draw a line in the sand, saying no more sewer, when we've not done that in the past.
The big question I would have, just from understanding that this is kind of outside the sewer ground, assuming we got the pass, which I think we do, would be, I know that the big rub is trying to get the external roadway infrastructure to the site, because it doesn't exist right now. It's a two-lane road, and we all probably agree that it's substandard. I think part of the desire of the city, though, is to be able to review the plan for an internal circulation of traffic, to make sure that, knowing that the external infrastructure of roadways is not supportive necessarily, that we have to abide by the apple, make sure that we see the internal circulation of that, is that correct?
Yes, but I don't think that's the case in this site, because we can't annex this site, nor would we annex this site, because it's not in our urban growth boundary. The only way that we could, we could get this site is if we negotiated with Smyrna to release this from their urban growth boundary, and we gave them something else from our urban growth boundary that would go to them.
So we don't want to review the site?
I, I would argue that the one that's, that they're looking at on Veterans Parkway, they're also looking at new land on Veterans Parkway, that is clearly, we built the 14-mile road, that would need to be reviewed by the city, because you're going on our infrastructure. But in this case, there's nothing out around that Beatty property that we've annexed, nor would we annex, that would be in that area. Just like Plainview, there's nothing out in Christiana that we want to annex out in Christiana, or out Epps Mill Road, or Buchanan, Whitworth, for that, that matter. So that's why this site is so different, is because it's an anomaly from, it sorta is in our urban growth, it's sorta is in our city limits, but it's not in our urban growth boundary.
Shane, just, and I don't talk shop with Claire, just full disclosure. I tell her, I don't want to know about your business, so don't tell me about your business. But from what I recall reading, is that, I think Mr. Beatty wanted 80, and I think maybe they're getting it for $75,000 an acre. So if they're getting 16 additional acres, that's a million two. So that's a million two of my money. I'm a county taxpayer, just like you, Bill, and you, Shane, that's being spent if they don't have sewer. So I'll go back to it, I think it's in our best interest to run it as long as they pay for it, but I don't want to be on the hook for the roads, because that's the real expense. I want to say Greg Brooks spent seven or eight million dollars just to improve the roads out there at Plainview. So that's my two cents worth. I still want to hear what Kurt Wade's got on his mind. He's sitting over there processing all this, so.
You know, we keep talking about infrastructure, and then every time we talk about a new subdivision, we talk about capacity. Now, we want to give outside capacity to somebody else.
And let them have exemptions from our ordinances that require them to meet certain things.
Yeah, so...
Can't believe we agree on something.
So it's, it's really hard sitting here to say, we want to be a good neighbor, we want to do the right thing, but what is the right thing?
My first thought, when you brought this to our attention, was, okay, we'll give you water and sewer, but we're going to annex you.
Good. I, I want to go back and clarify one thing about whether we can annex them or not. With the changes, the changes that went into, just so everybody has complete information, when the changes, the annexation law took place, or the changes in the annexation law that have taken place over the last 10 to 12 years, they introduced the non-continuous annexation, they also kind of gutted the whole issue of the urban growth boundary. We could not, the city could not annex the property as a non-continuous annexation, because it is outside the city's urban growth boundary. However, and this is my initial opinion, and I'm going to say this subject to review with consulting with additional, with smarter land use attorneys in my department, but it is my, and I talked with Darren about this too, it's my view that if the city, the city could do a contiguous annexation, if it annexed the entire right-of-way of Blackman Road to that property. Now, whether you want to do that or not is a whole other thing, but that's to your point, if, you know, if you wanted, if you wanted to annex it in exchange for getting sewer, that's what you'd have to do. And you, you basically would have this finger going out along Blackman Road.
So Sam, don't we have Blackman on the major transportation, or to get something done?
Yes, it's, it's on our transportation plan for a future upgrade of a five-lane roadway from Manson Pike, including over I-24. We've also identified the I-24 as a, as a potential interchange location for our connection eastward to Cherry Lane extension, given us a northwest to northeast loop from the Blackman Community over to the border.
So the other thing too is, I want to give them water and sewer, and then all of a sudden, they come back to us and say, they're going to stick us for the roads. And I spoke to the Blackman Club last night, and they were wearing me out about roads. And I finally had to say, half of the roads that you guys are talking about, they're state roads.
Or county roads.
Or county roads, that you haven't done anything to.
I don't disagree with you at all. But, but here's, here's the only caveat. We're either going to participate with them, and they're going to build a school on that property, where we know the roads are going to be, need to be upgraded, or they're going to buy an additional 16 acres, and they're going to put a step system on. or they're going to buy an additional 16 acres, and they're going to put a step system on, and they're going to build a school on that property, so.
It's still need to do the roads.
Roads are still going to have to be done, so.
How are you able to sleep at night?
Me too, and which is, I mean, I'm usually the one that's having the contrary opinion to where we are, but this is all I know. Compared to his predecessor, I think Dr. Sullivan is a very reasonable person that wants to work with the municipalities. His one thing he told me is my number-one goal is to build these schools and us not end up in the same situation that Metro Davidson County is. And if that doesn't scare the hell out of you as a Rutherford County person thinking about having a school system compared to Metro Nashville, then it try, it made me try to reset to say, we've got to find a way that we can work together. And maybe this is an opportunity that will help us all reset and try to work together. It may not.
I think working together sounds like a great idea, and you know, whether or not we can annex it, or whether we should annex it if it's feasible, I don't even need to debate that, because I don't know, I don't know yet. But my point is, the ordinance says what they have to comply with if they're getting sewer outside of the city. And if they're not willing to comply with what our ordinance says, then I'm a no.
And I don't think anybody's saying no today.
Right.
I just think we're just talking about it, having a discussion, which we need to have discussion. Have we even, or have they even looked at an outside sewer contact to recommend to them what should happen, or what should happen on both parties? And see, that's the kind of stuff we need to ask. We don't know that.
I mean, I think.
I mean, I'm sure they just said, hey, just get water and sewer from the city.
No, I mean, I. I think.
We don't know if they did their homework.
I think they did. I think they basi, we basically told them that you, you couldn't get sewer unless you request annexation, and they said, no problem, we're going to build a step system.
Specifically, what is an ordinance saying? What is it saying?
The ordinance says that no water or sewer service of the city may be, may be connected or served property outside the city limits of the city until the following conditions are met. And there are three conditions, and one of them is that they have to comply with basically our sign ordinances, our sidewalk ordinances, our design requirements.
And you think they'll be willing to sign off on, they'll be responsible for the roads? I'm just thinking, I'm not asking you that question, I'm just asking myself. And then if we do this, when the next project comes, and it's going to be the same situation, where we do this same thing. I'm just looking in the future.
Yeah, and I agree, and I understand that we've done it in the past. Maybe we did it in Rockvale, I wasn't here for that. But, you know, if, if we continue to do it, we're just going to have to continue to do it. And so at some point, we've got to say, hey, mea culpa, we haven't been complying with the ordinances of the past, but we're going to change that now.
And I, in a way, don't have a problem with that, because as things happen in government, things are constantly now changing, just turning upside down. If we don't, what are their alternatives?
Build a step system.
Step system, right?
Which, I mean, I think.
Looking at that, so.
Just over a million dollars. The thing for the city, they're going to, the school's going to get built there regardless. So.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, it's going to be built regardless.
I mean, the question is going to be whether it gets built on sewer, or whether it gets built on step system.
Right.
So Jamie, I'm glad you read that. So the question that I've got is, if we ran sewer to Plainview, but we didn't annex that, running sewer to them, did they, I guess it's a question for y'all, did they comply with our design or our standards, or we just ran it? And they paid for it to be run? I mean, what was the, the net benefit running it to them? Did they say, yeah, we'll comply with your design guidelines, or, or no?
Let me answer one question first, and that is, from a delivery of city services, we could not serve, even if we wanted to annex, the Buchanan school systems. We could not serve them because of the distance. We had several miles, no fire stations, no way to do any of that. So, so from a service delivery standpoint, we decided that we, we would not annex or request annex any of the properties that the Buchanan annexed. The private developments that were out there signed an outside-the-city sewer agreement, and, and generally followed, we've reviewed, we've reviewed plans, we've issued permits, we've done inspections for Love's Truck Stop and the Dollar General. We accepted Rutherford County's inspections of the residential dwellings, because they're on the same building code, residential building code as the city of Murfreesboro. So it was an equivalent standard. And I'm not sure, and Darren's going to have to fill in the gaps there, I'm not sure. Because that was the first county property we served in Buchanan. It was included in the sewer assessment district, and generally included in the idea of, we're going to be okay serving this as outside the city sewer to satisfy our contract with the sewer district.
Well, we did it for Rockvale, too.
Rockvale was a different animal, because we, we could, it ultimately, we, we intended to and could provide services at some point in the future. We just weren't able to provide services at the time that the sewer was requested in Rockvale. Right, and so now we've, we've grown to be able to provide services into that Rockvale Veterans Parkway, State Route 99 area with fire stations and annexation of the properties.
Yeah, I think, I want to say that Plainview, we've been tied up in that fair and the overall city, Murphy, for a fair of brothers agreements. And I'm not, I'm not sure, I know we didn't necessarily, we didn't, we didn't, I don't think we necessarily followed what they had, they requested for annexation. We went down there and made sure that everything they did complied with the ordinance requirements. The same thing with Rockvale, going back to research of that, I just didn't find it, it's all I've done by agreement. And I'm thinking of Christiana, I know Christiana has a, has an isolated pump station that runs a four-man straight-up church, Route 231, that was a little before hot time. The one on Manchester Pike, though, and Paul's Hill Pike, those two schools, I believe those were just approved as outside city sewer customers, they were existing campuses. We didn't require any modifications to those campuses. So it, quite honestly, it appears that we've kind of gone through a little bit of a hodgepodge on how we've handled these situations. And I, my, my thought would be, if we wanted to make the ordinance to basically say that we would allow outside-city sewer without annexation request and subject to a, a development agreement that would be signed by the county and the city. And in that agreement, you could caveat, you could, you could itemize whatever the council wanted to see on that specific piece of property or that situation as that, as, as unique as it is. Each situation may end up being unique, and you can just create a development agreement to address the concerns or the wants and desires of the city council. And there could be a negotiating, a negotiation back and forth on that.
And that could be design, roads, whatever we spell out.
Whatever you wanted to spell out, I would say you could, you could create whatever development agreement you wanted to, to spell out, and so that could be incorporated into the ordinance specific to the municipal system.
And to that, to that Darren's point, what you could do is add more flexibility than what is in the ordinance right there, so if you created another section that applied just for city schools, instead of listing out which city ordinances, which, you know, approval processes they had to follow, just say that, you know, that the city would provide city sewer service pursuant to a development agreement with the county and Rutherford County schools. And then it would be a matter of negotiating. What it is in that, as Darren said, in those particular instances, what it is that's important. Maybe it's not, you know, all schools are inspected.
But that's flexible.
Are going to be inspected by the state fire marshal. It's not as important that the city's building codes and inspect the school. But it may be in a particular instance, and it may not be important that they comply with the side ordinance, but there, we may have concerns about internal circulation of traffic and, you know, and road improvements.
Landscaping.
And perhaps landscaping.
So I would say, Adam's point is valid. We do not have plans or review authority on educational assemblies. So any educational assembly in the city has to additionally go to the state fire marshal for that. Now, if it's a building that's not considered educational by the state fire marshal, they won't look at it, they'll put it back to the city of Murfreesboro. So a football stadium, a wrestling, a wrestling building, a batting cage for the softball team, those are not classrooms, and those do not fall into the state fire marshal's review authority or review desire. And so those come back to the city. And so when we, when we look at that, we need to make sure that the things that are health, safety, and welfare-related, that we need to, that we have a responsibility to look over in our community are included in that development agreement.
You're saying, kind of one time, all the eventual add-ons of ball fields?
Ball fields, concession stands, quarterback club, improvements.
Yeah.
All of those things wind up coming back through as additions.
Pickleball courts.
Pickleball courts, they come through as additions to the school campus, and they will not, they will not get a state fire marshal review.
I went through that for Riverdale football.
Yes.
We, we need to look at that, if it's property that we plant, like, we would never plant on annexing Plainview, right?
Correct.
So it really needs to look at.
Totally agree with you on landscaping. Like, I think Veterans Parkway, if they buy a site on Veterans Parkway and they want sewer, then you should have to go by everything else that everyone else does. But if we're providing sewer out to Gum Road, well, then requiring them to put half a million dollars' worth of landscaping out in a county area where no one does that, that's probably unreasonable.
But I don't think the ordinance gives us the right to pick and choose which.
That's where we were talking about, we would.
Make a development agreement.
Development agreement. Customize.
Customize it to that site.
To that site.
A development agreement trump the city ordinance?
Well, we would, if, what we would do is, we would amend that section that you're reading there and to say, basically, notwithstanding subsection, I don't know if it's A or 1, but notwithstanding that first subsection, if the application, if the request for outside-the-city sewer service is by the Rutherford, Rutherford County School Board or for a public school, then these provisions apply. So you'd make, you'd make a carve-out from what is there already, and apply that only to public schools. So it would be, they don't have to request annexation. I'm just kind of summarizing what people are talking about right now. They wouldn't have to request annexation, but sewer would be provided provided as part of a development agreement with the city.
I think what Shane and Darren, and even you were saying, is the ordinance for veterans, that makes sense. But this is such an anomaly on where it's at in the urban growth boundary and.
Well, yes, not a, but I don't think an anomaly, it's like the other county schools that we've provided sewer to that have, has not been in an area where we would annex those. Although this area, which does make it sort of an anomaly, is it's probably closer to an area that we would annex if we could have, if we decided to annex it. Like, I, for us right now, I think it would be crazy to annex Blackman Road and One Mile Road and take the responsibility of having to upgrade those roads.
I agree.
Yeah.
Development agreement gives us the flexibility.
Where this now has become a little more tricky, where we've annexed the right-of-way going out to Rockvale, like, I could make an argument right now, sitting in front of the planning, the county commission, why that it would be beneficial that Rockvale schools would be annexed into the city of Murfreesboro. I mean, I could make that, that argument hands down. I'm not sure I can make that argument on this piece of property on the Beatty Farm because, or Plainview. So all I'm saying, and maybe it's gotten.
I would agree.
Some of this other stuff, is that there probably are instances where the city should provide, the city could provide sewer to the county, and it saved taxpayer dollars and benefit residents of Murfreesboro and areas that we wouldn't be annexing. And we've not been as consistent as we.
We will be in the future.
Yes.
Thank you, Sigur, I appreciate that.
Jamie, you're, you're right, but there has been instances where we've not used that consistency.
Well, I think your concern is that we follow the ordinance, that we do what the ordinance says consistently. Well, our history tells us that we haven't. So we've got to find some kind of way to, to get to the point where what is in the ordinance is something that we are doing. And every, all parties are held accountable for what they have agreed to do. The one thing I like about the development agreement is that it allows us some flexibility, given the circumstances that we've talked about. You know, the Plainview, the Rockvale, all of the, all of these situations have some caveats to them, that we don't necessarily have a flexibility of one size, or one ordinance fits everything. So if we, if we say within the ordinance, as you're drafting it, that we're going to develop a, must agree to a development agreement or, you know, between parties, ordinance outside the city sewer, sewer service, it leaves us with that ability to tailor that particular circumstance to what our needs are, whether they be infrastructure or some other, you know, concern, landscaping, those kind of things like that. We can tailor that to, to meet the needs that we have. And then we can, we can, staff can follow through on that, as opposed to just having an ordinance that everybody kind of winks at. Because that's what we kind of, it looks like we've kind of, I don't, we're saying, I think everybody's staff is saying we winked at it, it's there, but we're not following it.
In the county, I think, like, Jamie, the county also has to agree, and this is where I think hopefully this will help, there is a benefit to them getting sewer. That's a benefit. I think they also have to understand, to be able to get that benefit, there are some expectations that come with that. Like, we can't waive, we can't waive tap fees. I mean, it's, it's a rate payer, payer system, we can't waive those. We have fatty oil and grease procedures with our, with our, with our grease traps that they have to abide by, because that comes to us. So there are some things that need to be on the upfront as well, but we've. The discussion's just going to be how we do that.
Is it possible, Adam, to amend the ordinance to carve out this exception for public schools or county schools, however, however we word it, but leave it open to a, the right to create a development agreement that the council agrees? In other words, I don't want to go in there and put in the ordinance, doesn't have to comply with this, doesn't have to comply with this. It would be individual and subjective to each.
Yes. It would be, it would be that it has to, that, that the applicant or applicants, whether it's the school, the county school board by itself, or the county school board and the county.
Right.
That they would have to agree to a development agreement that's approved by city council. So it would be, and without saying what specifically need, the ordinance would not say specifically what needs to go into that development agreement. Staff, I would envision that staff, planning, water resources, building and codes, legal, would work to figure out what the most important provisions are that would need to go into that development agreement. And it would ultimately be city council that decided.
Right.
You know, okay, we will grant, provide you with sewer service to this property, but this, this is the agreement that.
Right.
That we're, these are the conditions on which we're providing it.
Yeah, I think that goes along with Bill's point, and that if we do that, we get to follow the ordinance, but it still gives city council the only way that, that you were wanting, so.
Yes.
This is not the first time we've had this discussion, but, and the county needs to remember this, too, that city residents are county residents. And, and we need to remember that, where we can benefit them, or an olive branch is a good analogy, but other, where we can try to help realize that, you know, we're going to, we're willing to go an extra mile, and now they need to go the extra mile, too. And I think this, this is a good gesture and a reminder to them that we recognize a mutual benefit to what we're trying to accomplish.
And I, I think creating this carve-out is not a particularly heavy lift in terms of drafting. And I think creating this carve out is not a particularly heavy lift in terms of drafting. And so if, I don't want to, I know they're looking at a deadline, but maybe if there's, it could potentially be something that we could get to council pretty quickly.
If Darren and maybe Adam could talk with their legal team to say, this is what I heard from the council that sewer is a, could be provided, but I have to put a development agreement together with these things. And then I think whenever we vote as if we provided, or say we ought to agree that we would provide sewer to this site, we should be very clear when that's made that we have concerns about the road network. And that's going to have to be a discussion in the future, not with sewer. But in other words, stop coming complaining to us about traffic or accidents on that, that area when we have said, yeah, it's an issue.
Does the development agreement, that negotiation will be the.
Yeah.
We're sending the olive branch, but they still have to.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
That's true. Yes.
I love a good olive branch, Mayor, I promise I do.
At the end of the day, but to Bill's point, you know, a city resident, a city taxpayer is also a county resident, county taxpayer. So if it's an olive branch or a win from a cost basis, they're talking about going and spending a.
Million dollars.
A million, two probably on 16 additional acres. And they can get a better system and save that 16 acres for something else somewhere, someday. And waste away north, that's music to Darren Gore's ears, you know. But point is, I think it's a win. But I'm, I don't want to be on the hook for the roads. I'll just make that real clear. Is, you know, if that's in the county and it's in the urban growth boundary of Smyrna, that's something they've got to solve to get buses in there safely.
On the urban growth boundary issue, I think it'd be all right for us to say that Smyrna and Murfreesboro, four specific areas where it may be time for both communities to look at our planning and long range plans for those areas because of how things have happened in the last 25 years. And so Smyrna, we talked specifically about this property the other day. And I think Smyrna's gotten really no interest now because of the county properties that have developed fully around it. There are no more sewer customers that Smyrna could capture in that area between One Mile Lane and the Beatty Farm. While we may be interested in that, I don't know, I think it would take some analysis. I do know that across the interstate, the Walroon property, the Sazerac property, the Disney property are all in our urban growth boundary, which would be an extension, that extension of Cherry Lane that we discussed. And then we are right up to the edge of this intersection of Blackman Road and Baker Road with our urban growth boundary. And a quarter mile down the road, we've already annexed the right of way of Blackman Road. So this will, this will be casting the shadow on Murfreesboro in any case. And it will be an impact on services and an impact on roadway that is probably worth at least us understanding what the impacts are. We can talk about who pays for them later, but I think it would be important for us to understand the traffic impacts and the drainage impacts and all of the other things that we would normally get in a review package.
If we do what we've always done, we're going to get what we've always got. And I think over what's happened the last two or three years has not worked. So we need to try something else and maybe this is it. And, you know, when the county commission votes 19 to nothing to say that they don't want to be part of the city of Murfreesboro, I disagree. I mean, that benefit.
Being inside the city?
To say that after sitting down with Dr. Sullivan, I think we have the opportunity to hit reset and try to fix this. And they're going to be building, I think the number's like half a billion dollars in schools over the next five years.
Joe Carr said 700 million.
So that's a lot of city taxpayer money as well. And we can either work with them or continue going the direction we have been. So maybe this dried out. If it doesn't work, six months from now, y'all can point and say this was your stupid idea, so.
Oh, I will.
I know.
So next steps are just to draft ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I have eight days, I mean, no rush.
I've done, I've done more and less.
Love you guys.
Greg, what's our timeframe as far as meetings over the, I know many of us have got spring break over the next couple of weeks, so what's our, what's our, I don't know, meetings?
Well, that's a good, good question because it's hard to track spring breaks since they vary. But we had planned on meeting next Thursday, thinking spring break was at last week. But I understand now some schools have it next week.
Not next week. So council, Vice Mayor Shackleton will be.
Yeah. Unless there's more out and then we could, we could do it on the 30th. We'll meet on the 6th, so that's April.
I'm out on the 16th as well.
On the 23rd. Jamie? What?
The 16th as well.
The 16th?
Right.
Oh, yeah, next week.
You said that's when you're out too, right, Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, so the 23rd would be the one after that. So is everybody around on the 23rd?
I'm out on the 23rd.
I was going to go to a Brett's game, but I'll give it up for the.
No, no, no.
No, no, I'm serious. I'll give it up for the betterment of the cause, okay?
16th or 23rd, either way is.
23rd works better for me. I was going to fly back from Orlando that day for the meeting and then fly back.
On 16th?
That night, I was doing a turn and burn to make the meeting.
How many are here on the 23rd?
I'm here.
Just Kurt's not here?
16th and 23rd.
How much do we want?
It's all good.
Do we have two out on the 23rd?
No, just, just one. Oh, you're out on the 23rd too?
I'm out on the 16th and the 23rd.
No.
She called you out.
Hey, Bill runs a very efficient meeting, Shane, when you're out, I'll give him puto.
He's been too short.
I'm into now, it's my boys, you know, they've got two months left in school. And so it's like, you know, not, we have a soccer match that night, so it's like you don't miss anything the last night, so.
Right.
I'll be, I'll be back after, you know.
23rd.
After May.
Who's going to tell the dad jokes?
I've got a dad's calendar.
Bring it. So when a meeting.
Boy, Dad.
So we are not meeting on the 16th?
Yeah. So we'll meet on the 23rd?
Not on the 16th.
Not, not on the 16th? Right. We'll just push everything to 23rd, it'll give us a little more time to do the two things we need to do.
I'm meeting on the 16th and we'll meet on the 23rd.
Or we'll be meeting on the 30th?
No, we'll probably meet the 6th after that, unless there's an emergency or something.
We are meeting the 23rd, not on the 16th.
23rd, sorry to the press.
It's okay.
We've got a lot of games, eighty games.
Burnham has a bomb.
Any other business for the council?
That's all we have.
All right, see you now, we'll stand adjourned.